We'll call the October 20th meeting to order. Moment of silence. We stand for pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice in common.
All roll.
Mr. Crouch.
Here.
Mr. Witowski.
Here.
Mr. Payton.
Here.
Mr. McCrillas.
Here.
Mrs. Jones.
Here.
Additions or corrections to the agenda?
I do have requests for the... There was an item you brought up at the last meeting. Around $900 for some sort of equipment. Is it already on here or did I miss it? You were supposed to get back to us about the GPS.
Oh, I can touch on that on the...
Okay.
And what are we putting on, Neil, on your new business?
New business, E., memorandum of understanding with the Fire Department Union.
Regarding the...
Regarding two items. One with the S.L.A. and the other with...
Health insurance.
Health insurance.
So we have two items.
Two items for that, yep.
Any other additions or corrections? Appointment to the zoning hearing board. Neil?
Yes, we have Joe Roddy, who's a Titusville resident who was just recently interviewed by council. He's looking for appointment to the zoning hearing board.
Is there a motion to appoint or not appoint Joe to the zoning board?
I'll make the motion to appoint.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All roll please.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillas?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Witowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
At this time, we'll have a presentation by the Titusville Planning Commission.
Hello.
Good evening.
I'm Rhonda Clark, again for Planning Service, Chair of the Planning Commission. But also I have Laura Price, who's a member of the commission here with us tonight. Now, I sent you a brief list of some of the topics that we've been covering over the last few years. Some of these topics actually go back to zoning edits in 2009 and others are things that we've considered since then. Some are items that we were asked to, by the previous council, to look into. Others were just generated out of our review of zoning. One of the obligations of your planning commission is to review and update any problem areas with your zoning documents and then we recommend that to council. So what I... What we wanted, I guess, from council was some direction on which, you know, which of these areas we need to focus on because we've invested a lot of time in some of them. Some of them we pretty much were done and sent up to previous councils. So we just kind of want to see the status or see if you want to kick it back for other work or not. So I guess we can just kind of go through the list here. There were some zoning issues that were in discussions and I talked to Skip about these, just to put it on his radar, things that had come up that Tim had talked to us about. A lot of times Tim would come to us and say, "We had this problem arise. So can you guys put this edit, possible edit, onto your agenda?" And when we'd give a certain number of edits and we'd send up to council. And the last one was about two years ago and I can send it to you. But it was just minor edits like, you know, changing Evergreen or Spruce Tree to Evergreen, you know, in certain places. But there were also some charts that needed new setback numbers and things of that nature. But there were some things that weren't resolved that are kind of important. And one is the zoning issues related to mobile homes and singular, single lodular units. And there's been recent changes in high approvals for some of those types of homes that makes it questionable as to whether we can zone those out into the high town area according to our shared agreement with high town. And there was also an error in the updates on the zoning ordinance in 2009 which essentially overlooked the fact that of single units. So it says that mobile parks shall be in high town, but it doesn't talk about the single units. So that's something to put on the radar. It's not clear now again with the legality and that's something we'll need to work with legal on. Another one that we were kind of putting on the radar for the city at the end of last year was zoning for vacation rentals. Now, this is something that a lot of cities are looking into. The recent Pennsylvania Supreme Court ruling in, let's see, Slice of Life LLC versus Hamilton Township Zoning Hearing Board and the State Supreme Court, I think it was August of last year, ruled that short-term rentals were not a permitted use for a single-family dwelling and that any uses not explicitly permitted in city zoning are prohibited by implication. So if you look up in Erie, they had a series of lawsuits and going back and forth. I don't know that they have a standing rule up there. They were going on a case-by-case basis, which to me seems a little bit crazy when you're looking at whether or not you can do vacation rentals. But they had, especially in Glenwood and in O'Leary Lake, those large houses. People started wanting to get some Airbnb dollars out and their neighbors weren't too happy. Personally, my own personal opinion is I think there's possibly some good in allowing for vacation rentals in certain parts of town. There's a possible tourist value or income value, especially around Oil Fest. There may be some practical value for that. We have a lot of snowbird, a lot of snowbird buildings here in town and so that might create some other uses for them at other times of the year. The flip side, there are obvious potential downsides. So that's just something we wanted to throw out there. If you want us as a commission to do some research, we're happy to. If you guys want to do it, but it's going to come up. So we just want to make sure that people are aware and that we kind of go forward and be proactive and see that as a positive that we can possibly put into the next zoning changes. Okay.
Good question. You're telling me right now that a person can, is not able to do that in City Titusville?
We, it's murky. I mean, we don't have anything explicitly in our zoning ordinance that says you can. There's nothing that says you cannot. And what we have in our permitted uses, as I'm sure you're well aware, is anything, any stays that are credited or left, lesser considered transient. And so you would need a hotel license or you would need a B&amp;B. So if, again, it's a gray area. So if you look at Edinburgh, you're going to see very different interpretations from Erie, where Edinburgh is letting people do this a lot. So I just think the city needs to make some decisions. If it is allowed, there's some pretty clear taxation that does have to occur to, you know, protect the persons who are charging the fees. So it's, you know, somebody could come after them for those transient taxes. It's a clear case of transient use of the rental. And so transient taxes means like the same thing that hotels pay. That's why if you've ever checked into B&amp;B or anybody done it, or B&amp;B or one of those, I mean, the taxes are all written there. It's pretty clear you're paying that. So what we don't want to see is people not taking appropriate measures, not having appropriate insurance, you know, then if there's an accident or something happens, there's no recourse. So anyway, that's just something we wanted to throw out there because many, many municipalities are starting to deal with this issue. We weren't sure, maybe if folks can check on this. I checked and I couldn't see. It didn't seem to me that some language we sent up to council was inactive. Went back and forth on it several times with Crawford County Planning. When I say several times, I went back in my email. We first ended up with an action memo in 2015. So it's gone back and forth a lot. But the language was, "Allow for building of one or two family residents on the footprint of a removed home outside of the current 100-day window allowing cases of catastrophe." Crawford County has some issues with that. Our legal counsel did not. I don't know where it stands, but I know that those modern setbacks are issues for people wanting to utilize properties where something's been taken down. So again, throwing it out there. If you want us to work on it, we can. Although with that one, we were, you know, it's kind of above our pay grade in terms of legalities. So you may want to start with legal counsel or legal experts on that one. The ever-popular lighting ordinance was sent up to council. I joke about that because there were some people that thought it was great and there were some people who hated it and didn't want it at all. What I would say is this, we have, I went back and looked, it's about 17-page lighting ordinance and we have a 30-page document explaining how we came to that 17 pages or how amazing. Like all the discussions and all the debates and all the pieces, I can send all that to you. It was a lot of hours of work by planning and some members of council joined us and some others. So there was a lot of effort there because the fact is that if the town does continue to grow and change, there may be times when lighting becomes an issue, lighting lit signs. So I would recommend that council look at these documents and read through them and decide if you want to move further with some rendition of them. We feel pretty much done with what we felt like we could do within our, you know, knowledge.
The ordinance that you had put together was sent to the city?
Yes, it was actually going to go to vote right around the time of elections last year.
The 35-page one or the 17?
Well, the 30-page is explaining the 17.
It's starting to sound like Congress.
But I can send you copies of this. And what, myself, I would recommend having a lighting ordinance. We have lighting language, we have signage language in zoning. It's in other, you know, zoning ordinance itself. But some, I can't say many or majority or most, I can say some municipalities and cities are moving towards adoption of self-standing lighting ordinances. And part of that is there's all kinds of new lighting, all kinds of new words. Lighting, you know, that involves with different kinds of articulations of how bright they are and how far they shine and lumens and, you know, just a lot of words. So it's useful to have that language in your regulations so that you can, you know, if you've got a contractor, let's say, let's say, sheets is coming in or there's a project and they have to run their application through all the planning commissions, through the city, they bring their fleet of lawyers, they're actually looking for that. They would love to have a lighting ordinance that says, "Here are the specifications. Here are the actual numbers that were on the box of the lighting. These are your limits. Buy this." And it's just much easier to do then than later when somebody complains and says, "That light's shining through my window. I can't sleep. It's pollution." Then the city has to decide, "Is it?" Because the wording we have right now is something like annoyance. I can't remember the exact word, but is that lighting annoying? Well, that's open to interpretation.
Yeah, because that could be in your light pole in town if people live in residential land.
This even went down into residential property?
Absolutely.
That what size light pole I could have on my front porch?
No, it talked about not so much the size of the light on somebody's front porch, but whether or not the light from your residence exceeded your boundaries into someone else's space. Was more concerned about that. Yeah, and those kinds of considerations are, and in the more of the business areas, you know, what kind of width of the casting of the light. So again, it's very technical. I'm not an expert, but I did, we did a lot of reading and studying and looking at the council on outdoor lighting and nonprofit, look at their stuff. And I would recommend that maybe you even get Skip or get someone to ask, you know, "What are other cities of your size doing?" Because if you want to encourage growth and you want to encourage businesses to come in, you need to have modern language in your ordinances so that they know what are the guidelines and rules. Now, one of the things we also put in, which was controversial, but I'll just start out there, was no moving LED signs, no moving internally lit signs in the historic areas. Some people were very opposed to that. We felt very strongly about it as a group that that was important in terms of this particular town's character. It's not something that I would recommend for a lot of other towns, even around here, but it's something we had really hoped would go through because we felt like it would preserve characters. We actually do have the regulation in the gallery overlay district. You can't have internally lit signs. The gallery is, you know where that is, right? The gallery overlay?
Go ahead.
It's kind of down Main Street. It'll pass where I live, down the halls to the St. Titus and then down the other side. And so you have, like, I could have either something history-related or arts-related or, you know, a gallery of sorts in my house without special zoning permission. Most people don't even know we have that. It's to encourage people who own these monstrosity houses that eat your children's inheritance to give you some sort of possible income and to encourage people to save the houses and not just chop them up into little apartments.
But is it all over town or just Main Street?
No, there's a gallery district. We just have a couple of zoning up here.
It's mainly Main Street. So while you're looking that up, just a curious question, I know I don't want to take a bunch of time, but you guys worked on this for a long time.
The lighting?
Yeah.
Yeah, we spent, I would say, about a half of a year and then we would have two-hour meetings, three-hour meetings, you know, sometimes more than once a week. Gallery is...
And so why, just curious from our perspective, since we're all brand-new, why do you think it wasn't passed before?
Part of council was very dead-set against it and part of council was going to try to push it through and they thought they had the votes. And then the elections occurred and they felt that it would, that there was no point. I'm not sure exactly. I can't answer it for them, but...
Thank you.
Okay, so again, our recommendation is council, take this up. You don't necessarily have to have this big fancy lighting ordinance, but I think a modern town should have one personally. Particularly, you know, somebody's objected, "We don't even have billboards outside of commercial." I'm like, "Well, you don't know what Titusville's going to look like in a few years. You don't know who would like to come in." And if you want to preset your expectations in your guidance documents in order to create the atmosphere you want, you don't want to have to react when people break their business. You want to definitely bring in new things and outside business, but you want to set the context first so that they know what they're getting into and you attract those kinds of enterprises and businesses that you want. So again, I think more information is better. Okay. So yeah, so we're happy to do more work on that or answer questions, but we kind of felt like we had done every, you know, like we were the wrong out of the strike at that point. You know, we were done while we could. Now, there is this thing called a historic overlay in the zoning ordinance. I don't know if any of you in your spare time read the zoning ordinance for fun, but if you do, you'll see at the very end, there's this thing called the historic overlay. Now, discussion of this has been going on since the 2009 revisions and it was revisions were adopted in 2009. But there was a compromise made at the time, maybe I can explain. That's about when I came on to planning commission. That there was a, there were a group of people working with the consultant for the zoning ordinance. They employed an outside consultant to bring in their sort of standard legal ease for zoning ordinance, update the previous one significantly and, you know, create the level from the city. But the planning commission assisted in terms of content. And there were a group on the planning commission who felt strongly that we should have historic protections for historic areas in town. Now, this has been an area of debate since I've been on planning and part of the charge that I took up as being a member of planning was trying to find some way to make that happen that fulfills the desires of the majority of this city. So the discussion at that time was, "Let's put in the overlay because that's one of two main ways in the state of PA that you can protect your historic properties." The other is a HARB ordinance. Now, you're familiar with the HARB because Franklin has one. Franklin is a general HARB ordinance. That means they have very specific regulations about even things like paint color or materials. And there's a HARB board that you have to appear before if you're making changes to exterior of a historic home. Not all HARBs are generalized. You can have something called a demo HARB. You can have a HARB just for porches if you want. You can have a HARB that's defined how the city wants it. Doesn't have to cover colors, but it can. We felt like the zoning overlay really looked like a HARB but without an ordinance. So in other words, it was an opt-in volunteer overlay where the people who opted in would say, "Yes, I'm going to kind of work with a board if I make changes." And it seemed kind of, it was a good effort, but it was never assigned any boundaries. It was never inactive because it's problematic and we couldn't figure out a way to make it work as a protection. It wasn't either of the two normal ways that you do historic protections in Pennsylvania. In a historic overlay that has boundaries, normally then you have binding legislation. You say, "Well, in a historic overlay, there will be no front yard chain link fences." You know, that's an easy one. Most people can agree, "I don't want a chain link fence around my main, you know, the Main Street, Victoria," whatever. But so that would be an example, a fairly easy thing to put into a historic overlay. But you have to have boundaries on it if you're going to use it. So since that was enacted, we looked back at that and as a committee, we've done a lot of research. How do Titusville people feel about protections? We did a survey at one point. We did a visioning process. I can show you the surveys from about five years ago. We had a decent response, you know, a couple hundred people. And they felt very, very strongly and very angry that historic buildings in Titusville were being torn down. And they felt just as strongly that I shouldn't tell them what color paint is in their house. You know, in other words, people very understandably want to preserve the past and they don't want to be told what to do. So we were trying to figure out, well, what would be a good happy medium? And that's when we were advised by Bureau of Historic Preservation Officer down in Pittsburgh to maybe go the direction of the guidelines, the design guidelines. And that's why some years ago, we suggested to council that they pursue a grant. They rung the grant, got the grant. And as of November of 2018, two years ago, we have a published set of zoning guides. They are voluntary. They're there for information. And we hope that more and more people will take advantage of them. They're beautiful guidelines, $30,000 guidelines and worth every penny in my opinion. So that was a step we took because we didn't feel Titusville wanted a HARB, wanted to go the HARB ordinance route. But at this point, 10 years later, we need to do something about that bizarre historic overlay floating over our city with no boundaries. It just looks silly in the zoning ordinance. So we then need to get rid of it and we need to put some boundaries and assign some rules to go with it that would provide protection. So we do have a National Park Service Historic District. It is roughly contiguous with the historic overlay, but it's not the same thing. People are often unaware that when you have a National Park Historic District that there are no legal protections. There's no protection whatsoever. I could go tear down our Main Street house and there's no protection. And in the end, you can't tell a homeowner not to tear down their home, but you can provide information and you can provide context for those folks when they're making hard decisions. And so that's what we're hoping for. So again, if you want us to work on that, we can. If you're happy with that kind of floating there, no problem. If you're interested in finding other creative ways to have historic protection without having the HARB. I like the idea of a demo HARB myself because the demo HARB at least slows things down. That means that there'd have to be a committee step after pulling a demo permit, not just, you know, it'd be kind of cooling off period. Others don't like that idea, but it can't prohibit you from tearing down historic structure. That's illegal. But a demo HARB can possibly discourage kind of fly-by-night tear downs. Bought that on cheap on the sheriffs, now I don't want it. I'm just going to tear it down. It'll be cheaper. We don't really need that. We need people to invest and invest their money and time and not just fly by Titusville, grab something cheap and then tear it down or leave it sitting to rot. So anyway, demo HARB is one idea. We also suggested to council several times, maybe to start thinking about infill ideas. Look at major cities, they have all kinds of creative and interesting infills in their historic areas where there's line-rowing development. So in other words, if you have areas where there's already been homes taken out and you have those odd-shaped lots, what do you do with those? Snowbird housing, you know, could there be a creative design that's consistent with our historic escape but also kind of inefficient, not that expensive to build relatively speaking? Something that is going to not detract. Because you definitely want to encourage rebuilding, but it might be nice if there was some encouragement of something creative along the line of infill. We even thought about a design contest, you know, architectural plan contest. Who can come up with the best really cool idea for a snowbird housing that it's consistent with? Obviously, you're not going to build a two-story home, a frame-stick home, but you can build something that looks consistent with the escape of the street without it being too disruptive. My sister lives in Calgary, Alberta, and the infills they have there are pretty amazing. You know, they have these little tiny lots and they'll tear down that little 1950s house and then put in a $2 million thing that's four stories and, you know, heated garage underneath because they're in Calgary and...
We're expecting some of those here.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. So obviously, yeah, and so that's not what we would be able to... But we might be able to come up with a Titusville version, a Titusville really cool version. So infill ideas. And then also along with that, it's not on here, but, and I know we've talked about this there, that why are we not going after those remote workers? I mean, you know, the tunnel workers, the Zoom workers. I mean, I work at Clarion, but I haven't been at Clarion since March. You know, that in other words, people are working from home. And I don't work from home in Titusville. Let's put out some advertising that, and you can make attractive changes in your planning documents that make that advantageous for people, including WordUp's and other tax incentives. We had been working on a landlord review program, but Skip informed me that he's beaten us to the punch. So that's good. We're excited that that's underway. And earlier on, somebody mentioned to me that there was a desire by this council to do a new comprehensive plan and I wasn't sure if they meant a comprehensive plan or a strategic planning process. Do you know if you guys are wanting a new comprehensive plans? Currently, we have the one with Oil Creek Township.
What was the date on that?
It was right after elections. And someone had mentioned to me that you guys wanted a comprehensive plan.
Now, the date of the last plan?
Oh, the date of the last plan, I mean, it's active. It's current. I don't have it here.
Okay.
So I don't know. But I would say about, it's older than the last zoning edits and it's older than the Saldo, I think. And I don't remember when the Saldo.
And that was done with Oil Creek Township?
Well, the old one had, I think, Cherry Tree and another entity. And then when they amended it, it only included Titusville and Oil Creek. So if council was thinking in terms of exploring more relationships with other townships, then it would make sense to update it. It makes sense to review it certainly. But I didn't know there was a specific directive in mind for that.
Do we have enough copies of that that each council member could have a copy?
I'll make sure.
Okay.
Those are, yeah, those are up on your city side, I think, and the Saldo as well. So if you're going to redo the comprehensive plan, you're going to look at that. So, and that's all I have.
Well, it sounds like you and your board have done a lot of work that hasn't gone anywhere because of government. My personal opinion is I'd like to start at your bullet point. My personal opinion is, I'd like to start at your bullet point number one and go straight down through and have your planning commission and our representative Sarah and our city manager go through these and prioritize them and let's get the ball rolling. I think there's some things on here that, you know, are basically language changes. We haven't seen the lighting ordinance. If we get that to review, I think, you know, it's apparent that you guys have done a lot of work and to keep your energy going, we should support that.
Yeah, and again, on the lighting, we're kind of done with it. If you have an expert, a lighting expert that wants to go through and take issue with this or that or anything or whatever, you know, we work from a template, but we just aren't giving you an outline of, here are the things that normally would be considered in a lighting ordinance.
Just give you a quick example. I just came home from my brother-in-law's out in Indiana. His next-door neighbor put a spotlight on the back of her house. And every time the wind would blow the tree, it was like a strobe light in his bedroom. We ended up putting more curtains up.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of this is more just protecting the residents from other lighting as opposed to restricting, you know, I was talking to somebody working at one of the churches and they were putting in new lighting and this person said, well, I had someone recommending the highest, you know, bulb. And it's like, you don't need that, it's actually kind of overdone. And lighting ordinance would help guide people in making decisions. People often think more is better when it's not. Or, oh, this is just as cheap, so I'll buy the bigger one. You know, like they're, they're incostating. And it doesn't work that way with lighting. So it also is a helpful tool. People can always, if they have a reason, go and get a variance, you know, if it's taught by, if they have a really good reason.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but Ryan, I just want to clarify while you're here. The planning commission is not fully at capacity of members at this point, right?
Yes, we need one new member. And we have one member that hasn't been participating lately. And it may just be because maybe we've got, the email address has gone out. And I'll work with Heather and maybe we can try and figure out, because that person's been very good. It's just that during COVID, we kind of lost touch with him. And I think he may be assuming we're not functioning. But we definitely need one more member because we had to call someone at her RV last week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, council? Council desire to have Sarah and the manager start discussions with the planning commission and start getting some of this taken care of. All good?
Definitely, yeah, definitely get the information to us. Or else you can come and read the lighting ordinance to us.
I will not cover it. But as I say, if you're having a lot of trouble sleeping one night, that's it.
Thank you very much. Approve all the previous meeting minutes of 10:06. Any additions or corrections to those minutes by anyone? We hear a motion to accept and place on file.
I'll motion.
Motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
No further discussion, call roll please.
Mr. Watoski?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Payden?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillas?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Operational reports from the Building Inspector, Finance, Fire, Police, Public Works, Water Department, Waste Water, and the Treasurers Office. One at a time, Building Inspector, any questions on the Building Inspector? I do hear a motion to accept and place on file.
Just the one or all of them?
Well, we can do it however we please.
Okay, I do have a question about the Building Inspector. So has it been edited?
It has. Oh, yeah, yeah. Number five was taken out and the other item was edited, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions on the Finance Department? Questions for the Fire Department? Police Department? Public Works? Water? Waste Water? And the Treasurers? We hear a motion to accept and place on file all the operations reports submitted.
So may I?
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
No further discussion, call roll please.
Mr. Payden?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillas?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Watoski?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Managers report.
Yes, good evening, council. Just a few items on the managers report this week. First item I have is just a quick update on the DEMO site over on Diamond Street. The front wall archways have been taken down, as you've seen. This past week, steel archways and posts have been taken to Windfall Road shop. We're awaiting a cost estimate from them on restoring the archways and the posts. As soon as they receive that quote, I'll forward to council. The western wall that was left standing up for the DEMO has been pressure washed and sealed with two coats of clear coat. The cap for the top of the wall has been started. They started that this morning, they were hoping to start it yesterday, but obviously with the rain, they had to delay a day. They're hoping to have, they're hoping to have it done today. That'll finish up tomorrow. Thursday, the next contractor's going to come in and fill the holes where the bricks were, where the floor joists were, where the western wall connected with the building. So by the end of the week, we should have that wall complete. I'm scheduling a sit-down discussion in regards to the parking lot this week. I did meet today with our Public Works Director in regards to what the plan would be for the lot, the parking lot that's behind it. They've already marked it today as far as the plan is to peel back the asphalt, see what's underneath that, and then make a plan from there. I did reach out to the attendant upstairs currently and the eye doctor to let them know what's going on with the parking. I also reached out to Missy's staff to let them know about the park there at least through tomorrow as they are going to start marking things up and getting stuff peeled away. We will be providing Missy a spot to get back there once we have a plan over going, she's aware of that. So that's an update on the DEMO site. The next update I have is the Brown Street tracks, the railroad tracks. There's two sets of tracks down past Carter Field. We all know how rough it is driving through there. I spoke to Robert Dingman, who was in charge of railroad, who CMT. We had several discussions about the tracks. He sent his inspector down there to look at the tracks, see how hard it may be to pull those tracks. They go nowhere, they're dead-end tracks on each side that are being used. He provided us two options. He's going to try to get them out of there if he can't. The other option was, he was fine with us patching, putting a skin coat of patch right over top of those tracks and these get through to spring next year. That road, in my understanding, is going to be paved next year. That skin coat would have to be taken off and then the tracks removed. So Chris Ruffner is working with Robert and Norrie to come up with a plan for that. They're working on that this week. So the positive note on that is we're going to have a discussion and actually make a plan, so.
You finally found Robert Dingman?
Yes, I actually talked to him three or four times last year, so, so, yeah.
Neil, I have a quick question about that. If his crew can't take it out and the paving and fixing and all of that, who is going to absorb that cost? Is it going to be city or is it going to be Mr. Dingman?
Mr. Dingman would be responsible for taking tracks out. We would be responsible for patching, putting the patch over top of the tracks.
Okay, what if our crew is needed to remove the tracks? Wouldn't he then reimburse the city for that?
I guess we haven't got to that discussion yet. My hope is that they're going to take care of the tracks. We would be responsible for that, but.
Just coming off of Jay's question, why are we responsible for paving the area? When he, when he did the work on Franklin Street and Perry Street, that was strictly a railroad project.
That's a question I'll ask.
Okay. And the second question I have is, not only the tracks that we want pulled out, but was he talking about repairing the crossing on the other one too?
Yeah, that was mentioned, that was part of the session as well. Obviously, those tracks wouldn't be removed by any event.
Yeah, they're just as bad.
Absolutely, sure. The next item I have, I want to bring up is Titusville Rotary. The Titusville Rotary generously purchased two new basketball rims and chain nets to replace the old basketball rims of Rubber Grove Park. I sat down with Chris Feely about two weeks ago. We talked about the basketball hoops at Rubber Grove. I think that, I don't know if they've ever been replaced. There's three hoops there, this is the main, this is the main court. The hoops are, I think one's actually 10 and a half foot, the regulation's 10 foot. It's actually higher than what it should be. So those hoops, the Rotary has generously donated, purchased two new hoops. And this is not the backboard. We actually spent some time looking at them just to see what it would take to remove the backboards. It'd be quite a project, as the bolts are very old and how it's connected to the post. It would be quite a project. But we both were in agreement that at least there's something we can do to get new rims, breakaway rims there, get the hoop set to 10 feet, put new chain nets on there, at least get the kids somewhere to play. I'm sure most of you see there's always kids in that park playing basketball until dark.
They're playing on it today.
Yeah, I've actually seen kids there with legs on their pads so they can see the play. So very gracious, the Rotary, to donate that. The hoop should be in the end of this week, if not next week. I've already talked to our Public Works Department, they're going to get them up. Obviously, no weather's changed, but I think there's outbreaks hopefully in the weather that they're still going to use in this year. So I just want to say on behalf of the city, thank you to the Rotary for their donation. Snowbirds. Previously, we had discussed a discount for snowbirds. Majority of the snowbirds currently shut their water off. According to our City Services Clerk, they pay the $25 turnoff fee. At that time, they're only charged the $6 readiness to serve fee while they're away for whatever period of time they're away. However, some snowbirds have to leave their water on because in some places, they have to leave it on to heat their house. They continue to pay their water base rate, their sewer, and also their garbage. After reviewing our current garbage contract with Advanced Disposal, it appears that a previous administration had directed our City Service Clerk not to provide to Advanced Disposal all the active accounts per month. Per our current contract with Advanced Disposal, adjustments to the monthly bill will occur if units are deleted or added for service, that's right in the contract, states that. What it comes down to is the city was not utilizing this feature of the contract. Residents were not paying, were not paying for garbage, but the city continued to pay the Advanced Disposal for those accounts. So when somebody would leave, we still continued to pay. The city would absorb that cost while the resident was, you know, out for a period of time. The City Services Office and myself, we're going to sit down and develop a form for snowbirds to fill out if they're going to leave for a period of time. For those that are leaving their water on to heat their house, to verify the dates of when they're going to leave and when they're going to come back, this will be a savings to the snowbird of about $18 a month on their garbage. So the average bill would be roughly around $35.76. And that would be for the water and sewer base rate only. So they'll see a savings of about $18 a month. And that's for our exploring services.
They would still pay the full base rate of sewer payment?
If, if, they would pay roughly around $35.76. Obviously, if they're not there, that's, that's what the water and sewer base rate only pays.
If we leave their water on, well, going back, if we turn their water off, we still bill them the $6 readiness to serve.
That's correct, that's all they're paying.
So if we can't turn their water off, we're still, we're still going to charge them their full sewer rate. So we're basically penalizing that resident who can't turn his water off and he's not using sewer at all.
Well, I guess we wouldn't be penalizing them in regards to garbage because they get an $18 discount.
Well, fine.
As far as the water sewer, right. My understanding, and Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, we would need a water study by our city engineer to.
We would need the city engineer to at least give us an opinion on whether the, whether we can reduce rates for that without causing any problems for the viability of the system financially?
Well, and again, this is just for me. If there's any budget the city has in front of them that can handle $35 fee per month for four or five months, it's the sewer fund. And, you know, we're not concerned about, we're not concerned about it if we shut their water off. And over here, we are because this individual has to heat his home.
Right, we need to make, we would have to make the change in the ordinance. And in order for me to defend that ordinance in court, if somebody challenges it and says, your rates aren't right, I need to have an engineer there that can say, I told the city this works, and here's the numbers, and here's how they work. Otherwise, anybody who wants to, whether they're benefiting from this or not, could come in, sue the city and say, your rates aren't based on something reasonable, you just picked this out of the air. So that's the problem we run into with supporting the ordinance in court if we want people to pay those fees.
But haven't those rates already been studied to determine whether or not they, they support the sewer operation?
Right, what we're talking about is reducing the rate then for certain people. And so we have to get.
But how can, how can, how can we do it if we turn their water off?
Because they're not, they're not using water.
Well, the, so Pennsylvania municipal law for enterprise services basically says, you're paying for the right to have access to this service. You're not paying for the service itself for the base rate, you know? The base rate might provide you with some credit for a certain amount, and then over and above that, you pay more. But the base rate is supposed to cover the fact that the city put in this service and it's a benefit to you whether you use it or not, because it increases your property value. Other people, you know, you can rent it out, people can have access to the service. So there is a benefit there to the person regardless of whether they're actually using it or not. And that's the way Pennsylvania law is structured on enterprise services. So that, and partly goes back to what Larry Golden was talking about last time, is, you know, if those people are paying for this service, you want to make sure that the service is self-supporting, but it's not supporting other things. So, you know, there's two sides to it. You've got to make sure it's self-supporting. If Larry was talking about the not supporting other things. On the self-supporting side, you need that expert opinion in there so that you don't get challenged in court in the first. Because you don't want everybody in the city to come and say, huh, these rates are no good, none of us have to pay anything. Now, I don't think it's going to take a full water study for the engine, you know, I think you say, all right, hey, engineer, here's what we're looking at doing. Will this work? You know, here's some financial numbers, take a quick look and let us know. And I've done that with other municipalities, and engineers come back and say, yeah, I looked at that, that's fine. Or, whoa, you know, they might look at it and say, boy, you guys are good, there's no problem, I can easily support that. Then we can go ahead and do it.
And what are we looking, right now, we pay $6 if I shut my water off and leave. $35 is the base rate, is that both combined?
What, the base rate only?
But, so we're not charging sewer readiness and all that?
If they turn their water off.
No, but I'm saying if they leave their water on, because if I leave my water on and don't use any water, I pay more than $35. You know, I mean, I pay like $70 or something, whatever it is. So my question is, are we trying to get somewhere between six and that? Are we kind of establishing a fee? Like if Bill leaves, turns his water off, and I say, I need to leave mine on because I have heat, well, then I shouldn't be paying the same rate as him, I should pay more than that because what if I have a water leak? Then what happens?
Right, and then I think there, there would still have to be meter charges if you start, if the water starts running.
Sure, if, if he heats his home and for some reason the line breaks, our, our water girl's going to know that immediately. And he would have to pay for that if it went through the meter.
Contact the engineer.
It just, to me, it just seems, and how many snowbirds take care of it? Twenty, twenty a year?
The majority of them shut their water off, pay the $25 fee, and then they can fix the hose for the month.
And do we charge 25 to turn it off and then another 25 to turn it on?
That's correct.
That seems excessive to me.
Yeah, so if I leave and leave my water on and you're only going to charge me $6 because I have heat, I save money because I didn't be much trouble, I mean, you know?
Well, you're still paying your, you're still paying your sewer bill.
Which our sewer bill, in a sense, is based on an assumption anyhow. It's assumed that every gallon that goes through your meter goes back out through the sewer, which we all know isn't the case. It's usually a certain percentage they base it on, like we assume 90% that goes in is going to come back out.
I think it's, I think it's 100%.
Well, it's 100%. Whatever goes in through that meter is what you get charged going out. Whatever goes in through that meter is what you get charged going out, whether you're sprinkling your yard or washing your car or what.
Let's put it in the way. I am like 90% better.
I'm not an engineer.
Again, I think the $50 is, is excessive.
Did the shut off and turn it off?
It, it is. It makes sense for somebody to shut their water off at $50, you know, but still, it doesn't cost us $50 to send a guy out there and turn it off.
It's $40 for a red tag notice, just so you know. If somebody has passed you on their water account, it costs $40 for the city to post it on their door and let them know that they're past due. So if you want to talk about excessive, that is excessive.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. So.
Okay.
At least, at least $18 coming off is a start.
That's correct. Yeah. That's something we can do.
Now, do we have to do that by resolution? Or can we just...
No, that's already in the contract.
Yeah, so we're, we're good.
The city can just go ahead and do that.
So we can come up with a form.
At least they have $18 a month more to spend in Florida.
Sure. The last item I had was an add-on was the diamond maps. That was the GIS system to help our city departments track things like infrastructure, fire hydrants, things like that. The system was $900 a year. Roughly broke down between the departments. It was going to be rated around $128 per department under contracted services. After discussion with the finance supervisor, the fact that we're in the middle of a budget, there's two months left in a year, to be able to give you an exact number of different things, some line items under contracted services with departments aren't, the number that, it's going to be hard to cover some of it. We decided to just add it to the budget for next year. We've gone this long without having done a map, so it's two more months. We certainly would like that now, but two months is two months. We're going to put in the budget under contracted services.
But wouldn't it benefit to have it now?
As I said, it would be...
And we're talking $900.
It's, it's $900 a year with unwanted users.
That's correct. I would get a mindset to, if we have to make a motion, to make a motion and do it.
Do you have to pay the $900 for 20, 20, even though you're only getting a couple?
I have to check. I, I don't think so. I mean, I think, I think a year would start. I'll check. I'm, I'm ready to do that.
So is it a calendar year type of program, or is it a year from whenever you sign up for it?
I think, I think it's a year from when you start, but I need to verify.
So it could be curated for two months, that it shouldn't be hardly anything to get it...
That's correct. It would be just whatever the difference is, if it's January, we're going to start.
I think Heather was checking on that.
If you can...
Yeah.
I guess my opinion would be, give us that information, or are we paying $900 for two months?
Or just...
I mean, another two weeks for a meeting, is it going to make a big difference?
Okay.
After 25 years of all that.
That's why I think, you can wait two months to get that done.
Any other questions for the management? Do you hear a motion to accept and place on file this report?
I'll make the motion.
Do you hear a second?
I'll second.
No further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Motowski?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to accept and place on file the Titusville Housing Authority meeting minutes of 9:15?
So made.
Do you hear a second?
I'll second.
Any questions on those minutes?
I have a question. They indicated in one of the documents that they had a resignation from their board and that an appointment would be made to the board. So how, do we do that as the city? That's what it seemed to say in there.
Yeah, we haven't had any applicants for that.
Okay. Do people know that that's open, I guess is the question?
I think, did you talk to Alexa?
I talked to Alexa about it, and she, she had said if we had any recommendations to her, they didn't have anybody in mind or that would seem interested.
I guess my question was, is it advertised anywhere so people know there's a vacancy on that one?
They need one also.
Good?
That was the other side of the question.
Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Motowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Subdivision requests?
Yeah. I, I don't have anything on that.
I, I didn't have anything in our pack.
Titusville Planning Commission, yeah, the County Planning Commission had recommendations for that.
Okay.
What is it?
Was this the property out near where the new car dealership is going to go, Oil Creek Township and a city?
Yeah.
Okay. Some city property?
Yeah.
Say it again?
Where the new Titusville Ford is going to be put in in Oil Creek Township, there's city property that borders by...
Because it's up against industrial.
Yeah, a lot of places.
Properties, property?
Property out there. And...
Saying that, that the new Ford dealership will have some city property?
I'm not sure if you also have the, I have to...
The judge is here, too.
Okay, yeah, please.
The, the property we're receiving is in Oil Creek Township, the property owner, a Joyce's company, so small strip of land. It's actually a brown shaped, almost like a racetrack. To be just abutting the lot, it's not going to, as far as I know, that they aren't planning to do a combination combined with that. I guess there is a way to do it at the county level, possibly in Cropper County recommended that, but we didn't, we talked to the buyer, and he didn't express a need to do any building. And as long as he doesn't need to use that strip of land with setbacks, you know, it's too, it's actually too small to be any, a lot. So I don't know if, I guess there would have to be a special exception made for that. If you look at the Cropper County comments, they were recommending at the same time that they put in an application to unify the properties. I don't know how, I don't, I've never seen one in all the years I've been on, planning to combine between Titusville and Oil Creek. So I don't know how that would work. But it, you know, from our perspective, if he, if he has, if he understood, he couldn't do it, excuse me, with that, if there's a building, it was okay.
And the purpose was to have access to industrial property? That they were looking for access to the driveway?
Okay, so if they're looking for access to industrial drive, then does that mean that the business will be in Titusville or it will be in the township?
No, I can't answer.
Because if they're doing this, that means it's interested in business. Would have been Titusville. Yeah. I need it.
I think the property is in the township.
Yeah, but I understand that, but if they, but if they, if that's, is that going to be an entrance?
That's going to be a square feet.
Brian, have you looked at that?
I took a look at something a while ago, and there was a question about zoning issues. I think Skip talked to me about it.
There's some questions about the plat, Mary.
All right. So when Skip was asking me the zoning question, I thought, well, you know, what you're asking me is something that would require a field of zoning hearing board. So I don't know about the subdivision. Got to take a look at that.
Is this something that's pertinent to this meeting, or can it wait until the next meeting?
Heather, do you recall, I remember they came in, was there any kind of deadline on anything? Were they hoping before they...
I think they're hoping to do that.
They are hoping, they said they didn't have, they were hoping to report. But we recommended that council look at the Cropper County recommendations, and we recommended approval, but with you looking at the Cropper County recommendations and seeing if you agree with those.
That's a problem. Yeah, but has our zoning, has our zoning board seen it?
No.
And, and I guess my thing, just hearing it quickly, if we're giving them another entrance to our city property, then a good amount of their traffic, if it's a car dealership and all their deliveries and stuff, instead of utilizing Route 8, could come off our industrial thing. And what, how is that benefiting us?
Yeah, I don't know. That'd be a question for the owner. I assume if the business itself is residing on the Oil Creek property, that's a Oil Creek business, but I'm not a legal expert on that. We were just looking at his, you know, the strip of land he wanted to purchase.
That's going to put more traffic on the backside there, which we require a lot... All their car deliveries are not going to come up Route 8 then. They're all going to come off industrial. How many square feet does that lot, if they want to add? I mean, I'm on the zoning hearing board. I haven't heard anything about it, so...
Yeah, who, who said that it was actually for access to...
He, he did at the meeting, said that that's really what, the purpose of purchasing that was just because their property didn't have any access at all to that. So, so the, the person who's purchasing the property just...
And who owns that property right now? Behind them?
These purchases are from Joyce's.
You mean the property being sold?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it certainly, I'm saying, it certainly is going to make it a property.
And he didn't say it was for an entrance. I don't, I don't know really. He didn't say he was, what size of an access. He just said that that was, he knew he wouldn't be building on it, that was...
I'm saying, looking for access to get closer to industrial drive, it's pretty safe to assume that...
Going off of Jay's question, is this something that has to be taken care of tonight?
To me, there's a lot of questions.
There's still, there seems to be a lot of questions.
I'd say...
They're still moving dirt.
Yeah.
It's the first time we've heard it.
Yeah, there are a lot of Cropper County recommendations that you need to get out there.
And that's the first we've seen that.
You know, I could go to the courthouse tomorrow and talk to Peter Trell about it.
And we just put a person on zoning tonight, so I think it would be nice to send it to them, too.
Yeah, and I mean, depending on what comes up here, it's possible if they're, it's possible the recommendation doesn't need to go before the zoning hearing board. But I need to talk to the, the planning office to make sure.
And, and if Heather could, you know, send that out to us so we have an opportunity to actually read it.
Brian, how many square feet does that lot say is, if we're going to add?
Approximately 50 feet by 875 feet.
So is that, how big is that? Is that under 5,000 or is that more than 50,000?
Correct.
Yeah, it's not large enough to be a part of the lot.
Because the subdivision, you need at least a 5,000 square foot lot.
What's council's desire with the approval of subdivision removals?
I said table it.
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'm waiting for the table.
Second. Okay. It's been moved in second that the approval of subdivision request be tabled until our next meeting. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Motowski?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Absolutely.
Council committee updates. Sarah?
I just have from the library, for, the library is now open six days a week. So they still have some shortened hours, but they're, they're back open every day. And they are doing some interesting programming. So right now, they have an online activity that they're calling the Great Benson Bake Off, which I thought was interesting. And so it's kind of based on the Great British Bake Off, you know, the baking show. And so every two weeks, they put out a theme, and it's all online. You, you plan your recipe for the theme, take pictures, send your recipe. And so the first one went well. There was an article in the paper, or a little picture, you know, a little snapshot of it. So this is the second round, biscuits and cookies. If you're interested in participating, it's on our Facebook page, so, through Friday.
Jay?
I have two, actually. So those of us that were at the budget meeting last night, we discussed, because we, we have a looming thing, I didn't want to put it on the agenda because it's been on the agenda for three months, but it seemed like, but it's the shade tree commission. They brought a proposal to us a while ago about us taking back the tree thing. And so we have budget meetings either next Monday, Tuesday, or nothing. And so I have sent an email out to them. I just checked that I haven't got a reply from them yet about having to come and discuss that. But that's, so on that committee, we don't meet till November 10th. They want the first reading of the budget to be November 17th. So somehow, not tonight, somehow we need to think about, and I'll have feedback for all accounts from them, what they want to do because on, at our next meeting, we really need to come up with a budget and, and are we going to take the trees or not take the tree back before then? Somehow, because that's part of the budget. Other than that, it's not very cohesive, but. And, and we need to put one more person on that, too. And then the airport, the Pennsylvania Bureau of Aviation has reached out to us, and we're, on Thursday, we'll be doing our second day of training, the advisory board. Neil's going to meet with us, too, talking about how to use our JSOP program, which is our 12-year plan. And also, Councilman Motowski came out with his drone and did a really nice rendition of what the airport's looking like as they're repairing it. So hopefully, when we get this done, we'll be able to put something on the over to show the community what we're doing out there. But they, they should be finishing up the small bit, cracks this week, and then they're going to do the overlay in the spring, so we should be, the airport should be back open next Monday.
Bill? Public participation pertaining to old business items, five-minute time limit per individual speaker. Anybody wishing to speak on the Marilyn Black proposal for City Hall renovation or the second reading of Council Bill Number Three, Fire escrow account revision? Not, we'll move on. Neil, second reading Council Bill Number Three, by title?
Yes, ordinance in City of Titusville, Pennsylvania, amending Article 123 of the codified ordinances of the City of Titusville to remove the city solicitor as a signatory to the fire escrow account, or plan.
Do I hear a motion to adopt Council Bill Number Three on second reading or reject Council Bill Number Three?
I'll make a motion that we accept the bill.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Aren't they moved in second? Hear none. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Motowski?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Marilyn Black proposal for City Hall renovation grant writing assistance. Do I hear a motion to enter into an agreement with Marilyn Blacks or reject the proposal?
I make the motion that we table it till, and do it our next meeting, so that we can research it, so she can help us with other grants, or just so we have a greater understanding of it.
Motion on the floor to table this item. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question about, um, I, I know some of the grants are coming due. Do you remember, Neil, what, what the dates were for those grants?
Yeah, the, uh, the one, who's this historical museum was, uh, March 1st, 2021. Uh, the Harold Heist Chartered Trust administered by PNC was due on May 1st. Uh, there is some pre, there's things that had done obviously before March.
But March is the other one, is one?
But that's one, March, March 1st is when it's, uh, it's due.
Okay.
Any other questions? Motion to table, uh, call roll, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. McCrilla?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Watoski?
Yes.
New business, uh, five-minute time limit, uh, for the public, uh, Council Bill number six, first reading, snow removal ordinance, city's, uh, civil service rules, Santa Parade, Resolution 26, the day building, waiving city taxes, and, uh, two items that were added, um, were the, um, letters of agreement, uh, for FLSA and healthcare within the fire department. Anybody wishing to talk about any of those items?
I just have one short question. It's only three to six, for Frank Dastrie. With a budget shortfall this year of 1.1 million, shouldn't we be waiving city taxes?
No, we shouldn't. And, um, the problem with this is, was caused by me.
So you're gonna pay the difference?
Uh, if you want me to. Um, but I had discussions with the owner of that building. Um, individually, I had discussions with him. I've had discussions with him, with the city manager, and I make no excuses. Um, I somehow, uh, not deliberately representing Titusville City Council or the city of Titusville, uh, made a comment that he felt his taxes could be waived. And those, and that issue was put in the sales agreement, and the sales agreement was passed by city council. But I take full responsibility for this matter. I make no excuses, and I will not try to convince any member of the city council that I did it or didn't do it. I will admit that my conversations with this person, um, caused the problem. I can't be any more honest than that.
Thank you.
I'd also like to add that a waiver is waiving the city paying itself the taxes based on the agreement.
That, what, what is the amount, uh, that the city would normally have paid if it was done properly in closing?
Oh, it was done, uh, properly in closing. Uh, there were, there were actually two different ways to it. One would be by waiving the tax, and the other would be by the city paying itself by closing. Um, the total amount's $2,502.20 tax.
Okay, thank you.
That answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Council Bill number six, snow removal ordinance, uh, would you read that by title?
Yes, uh, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Pennsylvania, amending section nine zero four point zero four of the codified ordinances of the city of Titusville for the purpose of changing the time for a removal of snow in commercial zones from eleven o'clock AM to nine o'clock AM.
Do I hear a motion to introduce Council Bill number six on first reading?
Sub move.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, we're changing the time, just in the commercial, uh, zone, uh, from being from eleven AM to nine AM.
For the people in businesses?
Commercial, commercial, um, zones only, not, not residential. This would be center town for asking folks to.
In other words, if I, make sure, make sure I understand, if I own a business, it's nine o'clock.
It's nine AM. It's not, it's, it's nine AM or within thirty minutes of a business opening.
Thank you. That's what I was gonna ask.
So if you open at eight AM, you gotta clear it by eight-thirty.
Oh, okay, and that, we, we are on that side, not ahead of time.
Right.
Okay.
Right. And yes, it's only for properties where there's a business on the property.
Not that this applies to this one, but what, what does the ordinance say for snow removal in residential areas?
I don't remember.
I think you just have to clear it once a day.
Okay, that's correct. Even, like, in close proximity to our school buildings and all of that?
Probably get, you'd probably get into the same thing with normal brush. People driving.
Oh, you brush by nine AM every time it grows?
I think maybe I might do that.
I was thinking.
No, it's gonna be hard for people to get out and shovel blocks. Might be three and four times a day. I don't think, I don't think anybody can do about that one. Maybe once a day, but I don't think they're ever gonna get out. Maybe, maybe they won't even get out once a day.
I think you have to shovel by six PM once.
All right, motion on the floor? And a second? Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Watoski?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
No.
Mr. McCrilla?
Yes.
Civil service rules.
Yeah, council, um, several months ago, there was some changes. We had the police chief and the fire chief in here and had some proposals of changing the civil service rules. Uh, obviously one for the police, one for the fire. Um, we basically did it backwards. We ran with the advisement that it could just come in front of city council. Um, and they could vote on the change and it was a done deal. Um, upon further discussion with our new solicitor, um, kind of did it backwards. He needs to go to the civil service first, get their blessing, and then come to city council and be voted on. Uh, so the changes were brought from the civil service. We met with them a few weeks ago, um, and they have affirmed and agreed with all the changes that were, uh, proposed by each, uh, chief, and it's now for you tonight to re-vote.
Re-vote what we thought we voted on?
Re-vote on the change to the civil service.
Just proceed, or I'll just, you know, look and re-vote.
Were there major changes, though?
There was no changes made other than what was voted on previously.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to adopt the rules as approved by the Civil Service, uh, Commission for both police and fire?
I'll make the motion since I'm their liaison. I'll make the motion since I'm their liaison.
Oh, okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Mr. McCrilla?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Watoski?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes. Uh, Santa Parade.
Yes, council, I put this on the agenda this week, um, and, and Councilman Deputy Mayor Crouch can, may address this a little better. He actually attends a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, uh, normally every year. The Lions Club hosts the Santa Parade. That's on, um, the Friday after Thanksgiving here in the city. It starts at six PM, starts at, uh, the OCT tracks, goes around downtown town, ends up at Chinese Park with Santa Claus coming into town. Um, I was contacted by the chamber, um, advising that the Lions Club, um, whether it's, and John may be able to touch on this, uh, don't have the volunteers, uh, don't want to put it together. Uh, so the chamber was looking to kind of team up and still sponsor this parade. Um, and the meeting, with that, John, I don't know if you were, uh, sure?
I'm trying to, to see, for some reason, I'm missing, oh, I got a beer. Can I?
Yeah.
I didn't bring my glasses, so can I borrow your beer? So, basically, somebody had mentioned this in our previous executive session we had, that it seems like the city has a lot of responsibilities this year for this. First off, for a while, they didn't even, because of all the stuff this year, they didn't even want to have, but we're trying to do something for the kids. And as he said, they have an aging population in the Lions Club, and they were hoping to get rid of some of this, although, Sharon Lovely is gonna be working with us, coordinating with us. And so, I mean, I can read it, that everybody has it in front of them. There's, there's a little more they asked out of us, and I think you, that there already has been conversation with fire and police because they're asking us to support that. There'll be a s- a small parade, very, very, uh, little route. I don't think that route is on here, but they have, it's a pretty small parade. And then, um, they're gonna use the OCT railroad space for parade lineup. Um, also, it says special permit, so I guess we're giving our, they, they kind of laugh because we're giving ourselves a special permit, I believe. And, uh, and we have to, we're responsible, and you've already replaced the call into who they recommended, Ms. Armstrong to, uh, possibly be our Santa, if not, uh, one of us, I guess, I'll have to do it, or somebody. And they're asking for the city to provide hot chocolate and cookies. They said some of the people from the Lions Club will help with that, too. And I guess Shambhotoi, uh, Shambhotoi, sorry, Shambhotoi always, um, escorts Santa and then carries the sleigh. And then we, we, they are asking us, and then they don't, they didn't know if, um, the Herald would, maybe they, they do pro bono, but I don't know. And the front of this is the permit for people, but not the permit, but the thing that people feel are to be involved in it. So we have to advertise in Titusville Herald. They're asking for us to advertise in the early part of November, since they would get through the Halloween and all that. And because people have till the twentieth to send it back in. And then, uh, contact, if we know anybody on council that might be connected with the color guard, uh, lead the parade. Um, I wrote, I have a couple of crumases, you can see with it, right here. And, uh, the chamber's gonna give us the chair for Santa, the gazebo. It's gonna be like a walkthrough. They're not gonna be sitting on Santa's lap for the public to know that that's how it's gonna be set up. And then, uh, and they're gonna advertise in their chamber newsletter. They're gonna collect the parade forms and forward them to us. They're gonna distribute parade forms to chamber members, and then they're gonna provide a prop for the kids, letter to Santa. So instead of the kids sitting on Santa's lap, they're gonna have a little box of the kids just brought their, their question. And then we'll send it to North Pole for him to get it.
So the chamber's looking basically for us to look, partner up together with them and, I guess, co-host, um, the, the parade and work together and.
You can say co-host or, or.
Hope what happened.
Yes, and then, but they said this isn't, this, from what I understood, because I ended up being, you had something else come up, uh, right at the last second. So when I went there, it was just myself and this is her out and the intern over there. Um, but this is not to set a precedent. This is just for this year.
So I guess I'm looking for council's, um, blessing on assisting with.
My only comment would be on the, the application form where it says it's sponsored by the city of Titusville, that it's co-sponsored by the city and the chamber. That would be my only.
Sure.
I'm a little concerned about hot chocolate and cookies. If we're not sitting on Santa's lap, then we're, I mean, the cookies can be individually wrapped, but hot chocolate's a little bit of a problem.
I forgot. So, the, that would be distributed in covered cups and probably a little bag of cookies type thing.
Okay.
But yeah, that's, that's a great question. Or they'll just give all the cookies to council.
So I'm gonna check on chamber and ask for that change on the app.
If, if other members of council agree, I just, I, I, I just don't think we should be going out sponsoring parades every time somebody can't do it. Being in conjunction with somebody, you know, I don't have a problem with that.
Me personally, I think that fire trucks should absolutely blow their horns and wail their sirens because it's not a parade without it.
It does say they don't, right?
Yeah, which, why is that?
Uh, sure, we can change it.
Santa's got very issues.
Yeah.
Have we, uh, contacted any of the, uh, veterans organizations?
No, they were asking for the color guard dad to do that. They really, they really wore it. Is that something you want to take on?
Definitely. Definitely.
Because they like to definitely participate in that stuff, too.
Well, no, I think they need to, well, I'll put my two cents in trying to get them to, uh, do something.
Yes.
Okay, I, I have another question. Um, in, in terms of, you know, the OCT and lineup, it looks to me, since they are collecting the forms, but then giving them to us, that we're responsible to be there on the day of the parade to do the lineup and, and facilitate the parade.
So they're setting, right, correct. They're trying to set up a meeting right after that. I think our thing was with the go-ahead, Sharon Lovely's supposed to be at the next meeting. I, I, I believe the Lions Club's always done that, so I'm not exactly sure how that's gonna, I think, I think today would probably just be, are we gonna proceed forward with this and try to do something?
Okay. So if we approve it, though, then they're not gonna come back and say, well, you all said you're gonna run the parade?
I think.
Sharon Lovely and her husband used to run the Lions Parade every year. So she knows what she's doing.
She's down there every year.
I would slay anybody.
We just need some volunteers because we're not.
So this isn't my department?
I'm not to do it.
But since I was the guy there, I would, I would propose that we say we're, we're, we're okay with the proposal as long as we work out the details. And, and our next meeting is gonna be early, right? November second?
November second.
So we could, we could have, we could ask them to, to work with any of the council they can before then, get this worked out. So we could actually vote on how it's gonna be and send the form of the newspaper.
So is all that in a formal motion?
No, somebody else can make it. I'll make my, I'm just kidding. Uh, yeah.
All right, motion on the floor, do I hear a second? That we, uh, participate, uh, co-sponsor with the chamber the, um, the Christmas parade for this year?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Mr. Watoski?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McCrilla?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes, in there.
All right, Resolution 26 of 2020, day billing, waive city taxes. Uh, title?
Yes, uh, this is a resolution of the city council of the city of Titusville, Pennsylvania to waive and absolve city real estate taxes on property being purchased by the city, which is at, uh, one oh eight through one twelve South Franklin Street.
Do I hear a motion to approve or, uh, reject Resolution number 26?
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
I have, yes, I have a couple of points here that have been brought up to me, and some of them were cleared up a little bit with the mayor's, um, answering this very late question earlier. But in the, from, and this might go to the attorney, some of these, if the resolution that I had before me is correct, it's, it's a little bit confusing to me because it's, it is a resolution about a future event that already happened. So how do we get around that?
We modify the resolution?
Okay.
So they're property purchased by.
Okay. Okay, that's, okay. And, okay, that's why I was asking, because it wasn't, if it wasn't necessary to close, why, why are we doing it and?
Well, it's necessary for the city to have title insurance.
Okay. Okay, and, and definitely, definitely going forward, this is a touchy thing because we don't, we're not, we don't really, it, are in the habit of buying property.
Right.
But, you know, as in the discuss, in the interest of transparency, I think we'll just try to be more transparent with these things going forward. And, um, somebody asked me this, so I'm just throwing it out here. It may not have anything to do with the resolution, but it does have to do with the property, since we got this new G I S thing tonight. With downtown parking being such a premium in Titusville, like, now we have the Burt, you know, all that good stuff, um, why not keep part of it as a actual parking lot, I'm just saying, okay? And, and have the part where be where the building went out. Somebody threw that out to me this week, so I said I would ask it. And that's all I have to say.
Any other comments?
Uh, I, I just have a question. So, um, to get the, the title insurance, this resolution's necessary or either, either way, we pay ourselves the taxes?
Either the city waives it and so the city doesn't have to pay it, or the city sends me a check, and then I write a check back to the city.
But it's hap, it has happened in either way, whether we approve the resolution or not, basically, in one of those ways. And then we can still get title insurance either.
Right. Because if I don't get the title insurance, I have to be able to show the title underwriter that either the taxes aren't owed by the city, or that the money came into my account and then went back out of my account to the city. So I can certify, you, some buyer tried to purchase a property in future and said that the tax problem, the title insurance company is gonna come to me and say, show me those records.
Right. Okay. So, and I, I just have another question based on the question you had about parking there. That has never been public parking, correct? That was all purchased spots?
I believe so, through.
Yeah, because I, I believe they put notes on your car.
Yes, except that, yes, except that there are businesses on that street that must have worked out some sort of deal with that part there, correct? Which, which is still private, but I'm saying, so somehow, in our master plan, we have presented that, that they will still be able to park there, some of them.
What, what kind of business?
Like Missy. Missy's place should still be able to park back there, even when we make it a park, right?
That's up to council.
Okay.
Where else would they park? Then another business, parking lot?
I mean, with street parking in the downtown.
Yeah.
Where's everybody else parked?
On the street, and it's full. If you go down there.
Make another street. You only got so much, you only got so much.
Public parking was not the way. It's, so it's not like there was a public lot and we're taking that away. Those are all paid spots in there, I believe.
I think if we follow this from the beginning, the plan was to allow Missy and the gentlemen at hobbies.
Right.
To continue to park behind her business.
But we do have, correct, we do have some interested parties that are asking, and this is why we gotta get this thing surveyed, but we are, do have some interested parties that are asking. Because up till now, if we go back through the deeds, I don't know how long, because you guys are older than me, some of you guys, and I don't mean that disrespectively, but there used to be a gas station there years ago. But right now, the property went with the building we just purchased, and, and some of that was used for tenants in that building.
Sure. There's four store runs, isn't there, on that building? Where they park?
My comment in regards to this is, why do we have a resolution if the outcome is the same regardless of if we vote yes or no? I just, since, since a workaround has already been established that regardless of how we vote on this resolution, the outcome is essentially still the same. I mean, yes, money will change hands extremely briefly.
I mean, yes, money will change hands extremely briefly, but it's still the same workaround. Why do we have a resolution to vote on after the fact of the sale?
Because originally, it was before the fact, and Neil and I had talked about it and thought, oh, it'll be easier just to do a resolution, have council approve it, than to...
Well, why, we had, we had this last meeting. Why was it removed five minutes prior to the meeting? Why are we doing it after the fact of the sale? Why didn't we discuss it last meeting?
I think individual council members wanted to talk to each other.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion on the floor? Other? Do we have a second?
Yes.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Payton?
No.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
I am abstaining.
Mr. Witowski?
Abstaining.
Sounds like a vast...
Moving on, the letter of agreement with the fire union regarding Family FLSA and their healthcare. Neil, would you go over that?
Yep, so the first item I'll go over is the FLSA. For the remaining timeframe with the current contract, the fire department union agrees to following, FLSA bracket hour tracking will be suspended. Any unused hours may be banked according to current contract provisions, Exhibit E. These hours occur to a maximum of 480 hours, calendar contract years 2022 and 2023. Hours will follow the same 13 bracket populations for the 234-hour call time. The union realizes that regular bracket premium pay will no longer be available, and if any, if at any time this agreement becomes, becomes unattainable, both parties agree to revert to existing contract language. That's the first item for the FLSA. The next item is for the remaining timeframe of the current contract, the fire department union agrees to the following, new hires, which would be the Minutemen, with no dependence of the Titusville Fire Department, will be eligible for medical insurance after 90 days of employment and shall contribute through biweekly payable deductions of 12% of the annual premiums. Currently, the new hires, the Minutemen, have to wait a year before being able to obtain medical insurance.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the two letters of understanding with the fire department union?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Mary Nun, call roll, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Witowski?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Public input? Anybody wishing to speak?
James Elliott, I'll go to the podium.
Thank you.
I have some, a few questions, actually. I was wondering about the, what the CDVG requirement is for green space. You guys tore down the day building, tore down the day building, the Dynasty property, and you're gonna turn it into a green space because of the CDVG requirement for green space. What is that requirement? That's what Danny said, it was a requirement to turn it into a green space.
That's what we were told, that the, the demolition part of that project was listed under CDVG, and that the result of that demolition would result in a green space.
Now, it's a commercial zoning. You're saying that Crawford County, Tony, it had to be a green space?
No, Crawford County did not.
Okay.
Redevalment, Tony.
Okay, well, they tore down the Troyer Building over here on Central Avenue, and it's a commercial space, and they use CDVG money to tear that down, but it's not a green space. Right now, it's a parking lot.
And it will be, well, it's not a parking lot, it's a vacant lot.
People park there, and you have, you let some guy park there to sell food.
And, and that property, nothing can be put on that property until CDVG funds are either paid back at $25,000, or until that program is closed out and we wait another five years.
Could you turn it into a parking lot, though?
No.
The city can't?
That property...
I don't believe so, for CDVG money.
It has to be green space, I think. I mean, where does it say, can you, the statute that says it has to be...
That would be for Zach, wouldn't it?
Well, that, that would be for Zach. I have talked to Zach about different CDVG requirements in the past, and my understanding is that those grant funds are supposed to be used for the purpose of housing under the federal requirements. Now, the federal requirements, for some reason, will also allow you to consider green space and paving streets as part of a housing project. So, I, I think that in order for it to be free and clear of those requirements, the city does have to wait five years after the project has been closed out. My understanding is that project hasn't been closed out yet, so it's just...
Well, that, the year that that was done hasn't been closed out.
Right.
Okay, and then I had a question about the, the building inspector's report. You guys removed number five from his report. What was number five?
That's why it was removed. That's my opinion.
Okay. And then Danny, you voted no against the snow removal ordinance. Why did you vote no?
Oh, that doesn't mean that I won't vote yes to adopt it, but it's just another ordinance on the table, just like mowing or shoveling sidewalk in front of your house.
Sure.
You know, how are we gonna enforce it? You know, so it's on the table, and, you know, I have another vote.
Okay, then...
That's more of an answer than you used to get from the mayor, so you should be happy.
Yeah, that's great, I am happy with that. I'm glad you guys are all talking and not just telling me to get lots. Then I was wondering, how many, you said there was like 20 accounts from the Snowburgs, how many of them shut it off, or how many of them keep it on?
I could only tell you, talking to the city service clerk, a majority shut it off.
But you're, you're not sure how many keep it on? And then, if they keep it on, doesn't the city still have to go around and take meter readings on it? And if they use it for heat, do they, do they still use water? I mean, let's say they have baseboard hot water heat, that technically would go through, I mean, not a lot, but a little bit of water, so their heater may still move.
I have, I have it myself, probably lucky if it's four or five gallons a month.
And, and, you know...
And we sell them 1,000 gallons at a time, so even if they only use four or five gallons, they still get 1,000.
Well, they don't get charged until it hits the 1,000.
Are you sure? You don't get an automatic, I mean, if I don't use a drop of water, I still get a seventy dollar bill. I've had several that, that way.
You're lucky. You're lucky it told me that.
Yeah, I am, but it should be a lot less. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Time is a card.
Anyone else? Council, Sarah?
I just want to comment that it's really nice to see, when you're out and about, people investing in our community. So we have several new building owners, some new businesses that have opened, in a time where it's challenging for businesses that are already open, so it's nice to see that we have some businesses opening, people making improvements to their buildings in various places, community participation at Sunset Heights, we had a, a good number of people who turned up for that community event. And people were just genuinely interested in what's happening around town, because they see things happening around town. And I think that's a real positive move that we're seeing in our community, so just wanted to point that out.
Good, and then, Bill?
I just got a couple of things, real quick. I'm very happy to see that on this council, we have a mayor that will step up and admit that he has done something not wrong, but is unexplainable at that time. We don't get that in, in politics very often. And from the discussions I had with a few of the councilmen, I'm, or a couple of councilmen, I'm very disappointed at the way this has been handled. I'm glad that it's all come together, believe me, I'm glad it's come together, and...
I don't think the public has any idea what you're saying. You know what I mean?
Well, we know what we're saying.
So maybe we could have five, 10 minutes after this for housekeeping, that was my request, man.
Well, it's my opinion.
Is it?
Yeah.
Try?
Yeah, I, I request five to 10 minutes of council alone for houses, a couple of housekeeping things that were done here. And I'm with Sarah, I'm glad for the promise we're staying in town, and I'm looking forward to bright future, we're getting ready. Our next council meeting will come up on the year that Danny and I were voted in, and I trust the year, we certainly didn't expect COVID or anything else, so...
Is it? I just have a question, I kind of heard back and forth, we've changed our November 3rd meeting?
And we talked about moving it because it was scheduled on election day.
Have we moved it?
We haven't done anything officially yet, but it, obviously, it'll be on the next meeting, so I think the consensus was to move it the Monday, the day before election day, if councils...
All right with everybody?
Yeah, I think so, definitely.
And when's our next budget session?
Uh, next month, 5:00 p.m.
Okay, all right. Motion to adjourn?
On motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Witowski?
Yes.